All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Monday, August 5th, 2024, and ask you if you would all please rise and join the village board in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
Trustee Lebeds?
Here.
Trustee Schwingback?
Here.
Trustee Baldino?
Here.
Trustee Grassi?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington?
Here.
Trustee Shirley? Trustee Tanalia?
Here.
President Hayes?
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have three sets to approve tonight. The first is from our committee of the whole meeting of July 8, 2024. Are there any changes or passes?
I'll move to approve the committee of the whole minutes from July 8, 2024. Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, seconded by trustee Lebeds. Any discussion from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next are our minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from July 15, 2024. Any changes or passes?
Passed, for me.
Passed by trustee Dunnington.
I'll move approval of the committee of the whole minutes from July 15, 2024.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lebeds, seconded by trustee Baldino. Questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Finally, our minutes from the village board meeting from that same evening, July 15, 2024. I assume passed by trustee Dunnington, all right? And any changes or other passes?
I'll move approval. Oh, go ahead.
I would move approval of the village board minutes from July 15, 2024.
Second.
Motion by trustee Schwingback, seconded by trustee Grassi. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll now move on to the approval of the accounts payable, and I'll call on trustee Bertucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move approval of the warrant register for the check date July 30, 2024, in the amount of $3,967,346.66.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Baldino. Questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Lebeds?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. There are no recognitions or presentations tonight, so we'll move on to citizens to be heard. And I have no blue cards, but I do want to ask if there's anyone in the audience wishes to address the board on items not on our agenda. All right, seeing none, we will close the citizens to be heard portion of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any members of the board who wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Any members of the audience who wish to request that an item on the agenda, a consent agenda, be removed? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lebeds, seconded by trustee Schwingback. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Lebeds?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Move on then to new business, and we do have three new business items to consider tonight. First is, get it? A request for land use variation to allow a motor vehicle repair major within the M1 district with variations to Chapter 28 to waive the requirement for a traffic study. So is the petitioner present? Come forward if you would. And just introduce yourself for the rec. Welcome, John.
Good evening. My name is John O'Connor, I'm attorney here in Arlington Heights at Dross, Kivellhand, McMahon, and O'Connor, representing the petitioner here this evening in Arlington Heights Ford.
I'm Cassie Smith. I'm one of the managers at the store, representing John Guido Jr.
We're here this evening requesting a land use variance. Arlington Heights Ford is located up on Dundee Road at the intersection of Dundee and Rand, and Arlington Heights Ford through, and LLC owns the building immediately to the south there, which is the site that we're requesting the land use variation for. The building currently is owned M1, which does not permit auto repair uses. The petitioner recently was approved by Ford Motor Company to become a Ford Pro dealer and plans to locate that service site at this site. The proposed use does not alter the essential characteristics of the locality and will be compatible with the existing and nearby zoning properties. The dealership is immediately to the north of it, and this will be an ancillary business for the dealership. The dealership joins it, and the surrounding properties around there are mainly manufacturing, distribution. There's no residential neighborhoods nearby, no residences nearby that would pose any type of an issue with conformity. Traffic with respect to the dealership has easy access off of Dundee Road or off of Ridge. Have not been any concerns with traffic. It's on a major thoroughfare. We're not asking for any type of parking variance. One isn't needed, and we provided a parking study for that to substantiate it. There is an available adjoining parking lot that is gated, that is owned by Arlington Heights Ford, that is going to be used to store the commercial vehicles while they're waiting to be serviced, and it has adequate capacity, and that will be used. Anything else on site will be located. Within the building itself, we're looking at a variance for the two shaded units there. The other two units are leased out. Those units are currently vacant now, right?
The two units that were...
Under construction.
Are under construction, and the other two are still...
So the land use variance is for units one and two, or 100 and 200. We would be adding approximately 29 service bays. The repair operations that we're requesting for is major repair, which would be work that will include, for heavy trucks, including engine transmissions, oil changes, mufflers will not be done on site.
Okay, anything further?
To address some of the comments that I think the village had previously had, the only thing that we had to address this time from our last meeting here was the screening to the street in the previous picture. If you look at that, there are some trees that screen the site from the street. However, we will be adding shrubs in the middle of those to block the view completely off the street.
Okay, thank you. All right, if nothing further, then, Mr. O'Connor?
Nothing further.
I'm going to turn to staff, then, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. What they are requesting Arlington Ford is a land use variation as referenced and the waiver of the parking study. We did not feel that was necessary, given the nature of the proposed use. It's a former warehouse distribution manufacturing facility. It's immediately adjacent to Arlington Heights Ford. They're not proposing any exterior renovations of the building at this time, although they have indicated they may in the future, and those renovations would need to go to the design commission. They've talked about some upgrades to the building, painting the brick, other things like that, and that would need to be viewed by design commission. This is just a request for the land use variation. It is designated in the M1 district, which does not allow this kind of use, primarily because a typical auto repair brings a lot of customers in, and the desire of the manufacturing district is to keep it more, you know, with your manufacturing truck traffic. This is right next to their facility, so it's actually a good use, good expansion of Arlington Ford. The landscaping, the petitioner talked about, there is a condition that they provide a plan prior to issuance of a permit. We actually analyzed this with 31 bays. There are two proposed future bays, so we included that in the analysis, and they do exceed the parking even with that calculation. There's a slight modification that the staff development committee is suggesting to the recommendation that came from the plan commission, the one primarily dealing with the requirement to submit a landscape plan prior to review by the village board in order to keep them moving forward with their agreements with Ford Corporate. We're recommending changing that to prior to issuance of a permit, that they need to submit that plan and then complete those improvements prior to October 31st of 2024. So with that, the suggested motion would be to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare the final documents reflecting this request and the five conditions that are listed here. One deals with not allowing outdoor storage of batteries and tires and things like that, and the second talks about where the vehicles would be stored, and that there'd be no inoperable vehicles. So in other words, no kind of vehicles that have been altered in such a way that they're not drivable or fixable. We want to avoid, you know, having some kind of a junkyard at this location. I'm not suggesting that would be, but that's the reason for that recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Charles. Saying the petitioner is in agreement with all of the conditions, including that one in the green that's new, that the landscaping shall be installed no later than October 31st?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Questions from the board? Trustee Schwingback?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question. I drove up there a couple of times, and you can barely see what's going on there right now because of all the shrubbery, so it's, you know, I couldn't even tell what was happening inside the bays, and the doors were open. So I would, I'd be happy to put a motion on the floor. I would move to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents approving the request relief for consideration at a future board meeting for PC number 24-004, a land use variation to allow motor vehicle repair major within the M1 district along with the following variations to Chapter 28 of the municipal code, along with the five conditions that staff has laid out here.
Second.
A motion by trustee Schwingback, seconded by trustee Baldino. Any other questions or comments on board? Trustee Lebeds?
Thank you very much. It's a fine project. I have no issues with it, but I think, Mr. Perkins, you kind of addressed what is my question. There was a bit of discussion at the plan commission, and that was the definition of an inoperable vehicle. So it sounds like, I mean, everybody has an understanding of what that is.
We do, and we currently have, obviously, situations like that at our main store at the shop. We don't have the room to store people's cars except for excessive amounts of time, so we'll actually have them towed away.
Ah, okay, all right, thank you. That's all, I think this is fine.
And trustee Lebeds, if I can add, there is a definition of the village code, Chapter 19, of what an inoperable vehicle is, and it's along the lines of what I described.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, anything else from the board? Anything from the audience? All right, seeing none, I just wanted, before we vote, I just wanted to thank Arlington Heights Ford for their commitment to the village of Arlington Heights, one of our very longstanding businesses on the north side of our community, and we very much appreciate your business here in town, and we wish you continued great success.
Thank you guys as well.
Thanks. So with that, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. O'Connor. Our next item under new business is the Tots Land Daycare located at 1007 West Euclid Avenue. This is a request for a special use permit for a daycare center on the subject property within the B1 Business District Limited Retail, and two variations to Chapter 28. One to permit an accessory structure within the side yard and another to allow a six-foot privacy fence within the front yard. So is the petitioner present? Would you come forward? And just introduce yourself, if you would.
Good evening. Anita Dulit, Director at Totsland.
Hi, my name is Damian Dulit. I'm co-owner of Totsland.
Okay, well, welcome, and please tell us what you're looking to do here.
So as a Totsland, we are a family-owned corporation, and we provide childcare services since 2009. And currently with three locations, two in Chicago and one in Roselle. We're serving around 270 families on those three locations. And we've been always looking for a place like in this area of Arlington Heights or Man Prospect. We actually are living in Man Prospect, so we're very familiar with the area. And the property on 1007 West Euclid is basically what we've been looking for. We're thinking that that would be a perfect location for this type of services. And with the building capacity, we are able to create the space for about 90 children over there. And so far, we've been working on preparing whatever was needed from the village to make this project go through, and Damian is actually responsible for this technical part, so if you have any technical questions, that will be the person.
So we are requesting a special use permit to allow us to operate a daycare center within B1 zoning, and also two variances, as you mentioned earlier. So it's an accessory structure on the side yard and an offense variance.
Okay, anything further from you?
No.
All right, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, as described, the request is for a special use permit for a daycare facility on the B1 district. The property is located immediately west of the post office on Euclid. It's a former bank building. Then in its day, when there was more traffic along Northwest Highway in Euclid, Northwest Highway used to be kind of dealership row. We just talked about one dealership. Northwest Highway used to have seven dealers, including the property's just east of the post office there. So there's a lot more traffic at that time. Since then, the bank has relocated, and the property is currently vacant. It's immediately adjacent to single-family residential on the west and southwest and multifamily north and south. It is a good transition use and reoccupancy of the building. They will be removing the drive-through, which is in this general area that runs through and around the back of the building, and converting that to the outdoor play area, so be removing that pavement. Some pavement would remain in this area, where there'll be about five new parking spaces added. The existing drive-through canopy, we converted into an indoor enclosed play area. And then the variation for the various play equipment in the side yard was referenced by the mayor, as well as a fence extension in the front yard to screen from the residential neighborhoods to the west. So the building is a residential-style building already, so this is a good fit with the neighborhood. There are no parking issues. In fact, there's quite a surplus of parking on this property, so there should be adequate parking for the pickup and drop-off of the, from the parents dropping their kids off at this location. And the capacity, as referenced, is capped at 90 students. There is a limited ingress egress on Euclid, and then full access on Kennicott, just across from the post office, and then there's the loading zone on the south end of the property. So there is a condition that if there are any changes proposed to that restricted access on Euclid, that the village would review that, and that would have to be approved by the village to make sure that it was a safe ingress egress situation. The plan commission did recommend approval unanimously, and there are some conditions relative to the capacity of the facility and the hours of operation and the capacity in the outdoor area to make sure it's compliant and compatible with the residential homes to the west. So the suggested motion here is to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare the necessary documents for consideration at a future meeting for adoption with the variations and the five conditions that are recommended. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Well, we're glad that you chose Arlington Heights for your next location, and I very much appreciate that. Just one question. How many employees will you have working there for you?
About 13.
13?
Uh huh.
Okay. And what training or certification do they have to have?
So we are licensed by the state of Illinois, so according to DCFS licensing standards, for the teacher assistant position, it has to be a minimum of high school education, full background check, and some like training hours. For the teachers, that's the minimum of six credit hours in yearly childhood education, and of course, also the training that are required by the DCFS. So basically, we are always in compliance with the state requirements.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, trustee Grassi?
Well, thank you, and thank you for choosing Arlington Heights. This is a great building. I've been wondering what's going to go in there. You're just a block or so from the park back there and everything, too. I had a couple of questions. What will your hours be? I'm just thinking for working parents, and how old are the children who will be a part of the daycare?
So to make it convenient for the parents, our operation hours are seven to six with the flexible drop-off and pickup time, so that's actually helped us to minimize the traffic, sorry, the traffic around the area, because parents, they don't have to be on time, like, let's say, 3:00 or whatever, so they can drop off and pick up kids as they need. And for age-wise, that will be, the license we'll be looking for from the DCFS will be 15 months to five years old.
Great, thank you so much.
Trustee Tanalia?
Thanks, Mayor. So my office is right across the street from here, and I happen to watch it all. This was a bank that just rebuilt itself. It's, did you buy the building?
Not yet. We're just waiting for this final approval, yes.
You planned to own it?
We are ready to close on August 27th. So everything is ready. We're just waiting for your approval. If we get this approval today, we're going to close in next two weeks.
Okay, wonderful, because it's like buying a brand-new building. The bank, before they moved, they ripped it apart completely and rebuilt it, so you're getting a beautiful, brand-new building out of the deal. That's great, and I think it's a great use for that, so I'm really happy for you. As was said, thanks for coming here. I mean, there's a number of daycare facilities, but it seems like there's just never enough, so I hope you guys do well and grow and keep growing. Thanks for being here.
Trustee Lebeds?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming to Arlington Heights. I'm always thrilled when somebody reuses a building rather than tear it down and then build up, so I'm really excited that you were able to find this property that's suitable for you, and you'll be able to modify it to the use. And as trustee Tanalia said, there's never enough daycare, and so thank you very much for coming to Arlington Heights.
Other questions? Trustee Bertucci?
Thank you, Mayor. One question in reference to pickup and drop-offs. First of all, don't you want to save the drive-through to drop off the kids? And, no, you can't do that. No, seriously, with schools, and I know you don't have anywhere near the amount of schools, they always talk about specific traffic patterns and the way you drop off, pick up, that kind of thing. And, Charles, can we see some kind of a, one of the pictures of the building? And could you just explain the pickup and the drop-off and how that will flow? Or is it just basically parking the lot and bring your kids in?
The parents have to enter, physically enter the building, and...
They do have to enter the building?
Have to sign signing form and bring a child to the classroom.
Okay, so the car is parked, and the parents, hopefully, holding a hand or being careful, the children walk over to the building? The parents walk over to the building with the children?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Trustee Dunnington?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much for bringing your business to Arlington Heights. There's always a need for good quality childcare. And I did take a look at your website. It looks like there's some great programs that you offer to the families. Do you specialize in families that are Ukrainian and Polish families?
So our program, it's like more like Polish-American based. However, like especially right now, we see like a lot of Ukrainian families coming over. For example, in Chicago and in Roselle, that would be like maybe about like 20% of our students right now. And we're usually trying to diversify staff, to have someone who speaks Polish, who speaks Ukrainian, just to help, you know, the parents or the kids to, you know, with the language barrier, especially in the beginning, until they adjust to the American language.
Great. I wanted to ask a little bit about the traffic study. This might be more for staff. On the traffic study, it recommended that we include a sign on Euclid Avenue that says "Do not block intersection" for the intersection at Euclid and Kennicott, so that there's not backups at that intersection. And so I was wondering if we would be adding a sign like that?
Well, as that sign would be on public right-of-way, that is something that can be evaluated in this section of Euclid. I'm not sure whether it's Cook County at this location or state. I think it's Cook County, so that would be something that would have to be approved by the county highway authority to install if it were an issue. And that's something that can be monitored. There's probably more traffic from the post office and the car wash across the street than there would be from the daycare, quite frankly.
Right, I just think that could be a challenging intersection at some times, and I know that it's rated C on the traffic study, and that's the time that people are going to be picking up and dropping off at the daycare. And so just to make sure that that intersection wasn't blocked, I think would be really important.
We can certainly monitor that, and if, you know, and then, you know, have conversation with Cook County again, that would be there, you know, for them to approve and install.
Okay, and then they also recommended at the, I think it's the south access area, where it's the loading zone, they recommended having that crosswalk marked and a stop bar painted in the traffic study.
So, yes, so Kennicott is an Arlington Heights street, so, you know, we can take a closer look at that. I'm just looking at the traffic study myself right now, so...
It's on page 24.
Okay, just one second.
It's the last two.
And if it's something that's not our right-of-way, we certainly can follow up with that and, you know, see that that's, you know, done in due time, for sure.
Yeah, we can, okay, we can take a look at that.
Okay, great. And then I do think that is sometimes a challenging intersection, and I've noticed that there doesn't always seem to be enough parking at the post office, and so people sometimes would park in the bank parking lot. I think that there's a sign right now that says you're not allowed to do that.
The parking is closed right now.
Yeah, so I think that's just something to monitor and be aware of.
During the day, that shouldn't be any issue for us if someone, you know, like park occasionally, and our drop-off is like really pretty quick. So I think like having experience from our other locations...
Especially in Chicago.
Here, it's like it's a huge parking lot, believe me. Whatever we have in Chicago, we could just dream of. And Roselle, actually, it's, that's a bigger facility. It's for 124 students, and we have how many, 21?
21.
21 parking spaces, and it works perfectly fine.
In Chicago, we have a capacity of 108, which is 18 higher than this one, and we have five employee parking spaces and five designated drop-off and pickup spaces.
Which is like along the street, so...
And it kind of works. You know, it's not great, but it works.
But it serves a purpose, yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much.
Anybody else? All right, do we need, do we need a motion? Trustee Baldino?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I will move to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents approving the requested relief for consideration at a future board meeting for PC 24-005, special use permit for a daycare center on the subject property with the two variations and five conditions listed.
Second.
Motion by trustee Baldino, second, who was the second?
I was, I think it was a, it was a chorus.
We'll make it trustee Lebeds, ladies first. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, congratulations and welcome to the village of Arlington Heights. We wish you many years of great success.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks. And last item under new business is a number of requests from the Park District, our friends at the Park District. And so this is for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, rezoning, planned unit development, and a special use permit, and also a number of variations. So we've got a team from the Park District, welcome, and please introduce yourselves, if you would.
Thank you. John Kramer with the Arlington Heights Park District.
Steve Connors with Hitchcock Design Group, the design consultant for the Park District.
Okay, tell us what you're looking to do here.
Sure, absolutely. High-level recreation park has been phased, planned for phase improvements for some time, so we're excited to bring to you tonight various options for what we have planned. First slide, can you click that a little bit? So as you know, this has been several years in the making. We have gone through many iterations of looking at this. We've had public involvement illustrated on the slide indicating two public meetings where we've taken items that we ultimately would like to incorporate and have proposed in grant funding, which is currently roughly over $4 million of grant funding that we've received for the project, and right now, with all phases... right now with all phases is over twenty-four million dollars in total in plans. Phase one of the plan is the one that obviously recreates some of the existing amenities that are currently there now, so replacing the existing playground with a fully-inclusive playground, replacement of the tennis courts and slightly moving that, some trails, additions, and, uh, reworking of those items, the skate park at the extreme end, all of those items are looked at as a phase one improvement. Phase one B, or excuse me, one A we're calling, is the demolition of the properties along Northwest Highway, which, of the ones that are remaining are five hundred, five oh six, Northwest Highway, and twenty-one West Belmont, which was that multi, uh, multi-apartment building that was current, that was currently there. Uh, and then phase two moves on to the second O S L A T grant in a future year, which ultimately would be the recreation of the existing baseball field by adding some amenities but leaving the baseball field at its current location, a basketball court, the, um, installation of a toilet room that currently does not exist, and then the basketball court gets moved from its kind of inclusive behavior inside the parking lot to its own standalone basketball court. And phase three ultimately is the bath house and the renovation of the existing pool that's there now in its current configuration. There's still some iterations going on with the use of the other bath house, um, that's going through our park board, but basically those are the three phases. First phase, ideally would, since we're currently under our grant requirements, would complete in April of next year, which is some of the reason for our angst in getting this project started, so we can meet those grant requirements. We then have another year for the phase two requirements, and then obviously the last phase three has, uh, grant requirements as well too, which is a dated project. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to kind of walk through some of the pointed items that his team so carefully and creatively developed.
So just for purposes of being able to zoom in a little bit closer for detail, the orientation changes on you here, so north is now to the right on your screen with Northwest Highway, you can see to the left. And as John mentioned, we're looking at phase one, which is primarily the west and south sides of this particular property, we're gonna work our way kind of from the, uh, the northern or the right side of the slide and work our way south. So in that sort of northwestern corner, what we're talking about is primarily a renovation of an existing playground, and so the new playground will be a fully-inclusive playground, slightly reordered to work with some of the grades and work in new improvements, make sure it's fully accessible, and that's sort of that, the, the large blue area that you see on the, you know, on the very far right. And just a little bit next to that area, um, sort of to the, the bottom left of that on your screen, item D, letter D, is a small fitness, outdoor fitness equipment area, and so that's positioned so it can be near the play equipment, so if parents happen to be out there to, to do some out, outdoor workout, they can still be near the playground for their children. And then you'll notice that there's sort of a new added small parking lot on this west side to make parking more convenient for all the western amenities that exist there, specifically to also add several handicap stalls, because it's gonna be a fully-inclusive playground, we wanna make sure that, that there's sort of enough handicap stalls to support that inclusive playground as well. Um, that does make the tennis court shift a little bit further south from its current location, uh, but it's, it, there's three out there currently, and so there'll be another three, so same, same quantity, so complete brand-new courts, new drainage, and new lighting, and by having new lighting, it'll actually be improved lighting for the adjacent residents, because it'll be, it'll be new LED lighting with better shield, better technology, and less spill, uh, beyond the property. The other, uh, just to the east of the parking lot, uh, you know, down on your screen, you'll see some open space with a, a small rain garden area, there's a few rain gardens and native plantings sort of spread throughout the park to handle stormwater and create new habitat for birds and butterflies and other, other sort of pollinators. And between the tennis and that little rain garden area, item E is a small outdoor baggo courts, so again, just in bringing a new amenity to this particular area and really creating a family core in this sort of northwestern spark, part of the park. Um, all the pathways will be resurfaced or in, in rebuilt within this phase one limit and fully accessible. As we kind of work our way further south, you'll see that there's still one remaining private residence outlook that is not part of the park, that's outside of that red limit line. As we work our way to the south, it's primarily gonna be open space and trails, um, along Northwest Highway specifically, there is a, gonna be a concrete multi-use path to go in order with the village's plans, or for the bike route along Northwest Highway. Most of that open space that you see and sort of in area J is gonna be reserved for stormwater detention, and so we're making sure that we're accommodating stormwater detention for racing all three phases within the phase one development. And then as we work our way to the bottom of the screen, which is the sort of southeast section of the park, um, that's gonna be the new skate park, new in-ground skate park with, again, sort of a new amenity and a shelter for shade, and then we've got two new entrances at both corners of the site to create good pedestrian access, uh, into the community on both ends of the park, so... A few, um, just images to give you an idea, when we talk about the inclusive playground, you can see some of the amenities here, is gonna be a little bit themed, uh, because it's near sort of that metro station, we're looking at a train theme with this inclusive playground, you'll see sort of a, a raised, um, connection point to the left of the screen, making sure that we're bringing people up to the, uh, height of some of those ramps and decks again to be fully inclusive and not have everything all be ground, uh, ground play, but just give you a little bit more of an idea of what that play equipment is gonna look like. Some of the other features we talked about, the baggo, the fitness equipment, the new tennis courts, the skate park, all images just give you examples of what those components are gonna look like, and some of the materials that were, uh, that are being considered for use, and some of the finishes.
So our request, uh, request to waive the requirements for a traffic and parking study, a request to increase the fence height from six foot to ten foot, a request to permit the tennis courts in the required side yard, request to allow twelve accessory structures, and a request to allow sports lighting at fifty foot in height. And then with that, um, I'm gonna ask Executive Director Fullerton if she could address relative to Commissioner Ennis's comments.
Good evening.
Hi, Carrie.
Um, so there was a question at the planning commission from, uh, Commissioner Ennis about the tax impact from the businesses that are on Northwest Highway, um, so the numbers that I have with me tonight are estimates from our team to the best of their ability. The tax impact from the automotive businesses five hundred and five oh six Northwest Highway is estimated at three hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, which became exempt in twenty thirteen and twenty sixteen. These businesses still pay sale tax, sales tax, um, they were, these, all these properties were owned by the Park District, they were included in the master plan, uh, for the property for Rec Park all along, um, and all of the renters were told that the properties, uh, could come down at any time, um, to allow for the implementation of the master plan. The Park District did report each property tax with the associated lease agreements to the county each year, um, and obviously Cook County then made these properties tax-exempt. So I hope that answers his question.
Thanks, Carrie. Anything else from the Park District? Okay, let me turn it over to, uh, the planning department, Mr. Perkins.
Yes, I, I think most of the requested actions have been explained, I'll, I'll go through a few of them in the presentation, I won't read all of them, um, as well as the variations. Um, Rec Park is one of the oldest parks in the community, about eighty-five years old, and over the years, the Park District has acquired some of the surrounding properties. In fact, um, this is from the previous downtown master plan that envisioned the expansion of Rec Park to Northwest Highway, you'll see on the far right-hand side, this exhibit showing the park going all the way to Northwest Highway, so this has been, you know, long, uh, in the making, looking at expanding to the south and, uh, getting the acreage that's needed for, for the community park. So on the left here is the existing comprehensive plan as it stands today, and it was amended, uh, quite a few years ago to show the automotive uses on Northwest Highway as parkland, future parkland, even though they were not, um, used as that, um, with the exception of the former gas station at the corner of Belmont and Northwest Highway, and then the residential uses along Belmont were not changed either. Um, the area on the northeast, um, at Minor and Hickory, um, that was the old Weber, uh, manufacturing facility, the Park District purchased that probably in the nineties and has been using it as open space, that has never been rezoned, as you see on the left, that's still zone manufacturing, and so part of this request is to rezone that to public lands, the same with the commercial properties, although, all, commercial properties have never been rezoned, as well as, uh, the properties, uh, just to the north here, uh, that they've acquired, so you can see here, all of the properties would be rezoned to public lands with the exception of the one, uh, residential home that the Park District does not currently own on the east side of Belmont. Um, so they've provided, the Park District has provided details on phase one and phase one A only, we do not have details on phase two or three, um, so the, um, the illustrative, uh, revision of the parking lot, we've not analyzed parking, whether that adds or deletes parking and what impact that has on the uses, so those elements, when they're defined further by the Park District, they would have to submit those details back to the village for further review, uh, but the details they have provided and, uh, the reason for us agreeing with waiving of the, uh, traffic and parking study is they have a tight timeline to get, uh, implemented and get going with this grant to, you know, keep the grant in Arlington Heights, um, so we've worked with them, uh, to get to this point, uh, with their phase one, uh, project. Um, there are some improvements that are, are part of that or some other variations, there are about a dozen structures on the property existing that, uh, would need a variation to be accessory structures, um, there's also a variation for four light poles around the tennis courts, they're currently lit, the tennis courts are getting shifted slightly to the south, but the intensity is not changing, they would still have to meet the village's lighting requirements, even though they're taller light poles. Uh, one of the conditions, uh, you'll see in the recommendation is as an existing alley that needs to be vacated in order for the approvals to be granted, and part of the, um, original recommendation was that, that alley, uh, be vacated prior to being heard by the village board, again, in an effort to keep this project moving, uh, staff development committee is recommending some adjustments to that, to have that vacation occur prior to final village board approval, so hopefully the alley vacation, as well as the ordinance grant, you know, assuming the board would approve this, is on, would be on the same agenda item. And then, uh, there is an easement that's required for the sidewalk along Northwest Highway, and we did ask for an eight-foot multi-use path to be, uh, installed along there, some of which would be on the Park District property, so that we would need a sidewalk easement, and, uh, we're suggesting that get, um, granted to the village prior to October eighth, um, so we can keep, uh, the project on track. With that, um, the planning commission did unanimously approve this particular request as well, and the suggested motion again is to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare the final documents, uh, for final approval by the village board at a future date, and I know there's a lot here that probably I skipped over, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Perkins. Before we move on, I just wanna make sure that some members of the audience know that they can leave if they want to, uh, Mr. Kelly, your item's been approved, and Totsland, your item's been approved, so you're welcome to stay, but, um, your items have been approved, so that's up to you.
You. Have a nice night, everybody.
Okay, all right. Uh, and now, a, a couple of questions, uh, for very important, on the bags area, uh, do people bring their own bags, or is there an area where they can get bags right there? Just Carrie. Carrie, you gotta come up.
Otherwise folks at TV can't hear, can't hear you.
For that question, that's a great question, uh, we will implement an ability for people to rent them at the pool during the summer, probably in the off-season, they'd have to bring their own.
Ah, okay.
So, yes, of course.
Just popped into my mind.
Can't play bags without the bags, right?
Okay, and before you sit down, I know you've talked to us about this in the past, but just so the public knows, uh, where is the main stage gonna go for Frontier Days if the, you got the skate park in that area?
So the main stage is planned to be in its same location.
Same, you can still do it in the same location?
Yes, we, we've actually worked quite, quite closely with them to be able to ensure that we can, can still accommodate that, so...
Okay.
Um, this year with the removal of the, um, carnival move this year, as, because we know the changes are coming, and I think that worked out quite well for them.
That did work out really well, yeah. Yeah, thank, thank you for your, uh, your cooperation and, um, partnership with the Frontier Days people and working all that out, 'cause I think it did work really good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, other questions from the board? Trustee Labads.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes, and thank you all for bringing this forward, it's really exciting, uh, to see the changes, and, um, and I know that this isn't, the, that the building isn't part of the first phase, it's not toward, till towards the end, but I'm so glad that we're going to keep that building, because it's really important to the history of Arlington Heights. Um, I have a question about this alley, I had no idea there was an alley in Rec Park, so could you go back to, to, uh, this, I, and I'm just trying to even visualize where it is, so...
So this is, uh, if you're familiar with the building, uh, that used to be Mike's garage, I think this is it, immediately behind is like a little gravel alley with, uh, overhead utilities, and, uh, used to serve probably all of the properties in some, some time back, and if you go elsewhere on Northwest Highway, you'll see lots of these little alleys that, you know, behind the commercial buildings on Northwest Highway.
Oh, okay, thank you, I mean, we walk around there a lot, and I've seen the gravel, but it never occurred to me it was an actual alley, so, so I found that to be very interesting piece, uh, to learn about. Um, I do have a couple of questions, um, I know that, reading through the comments that you receive from many people, they were, uh, particularly interested in the tennis courts, and there seemed to be an interest in having more than the three was, uh, courts, was that something that was not really possible to accommodate?
So we, our original design had two courts, um, and then the community felt very strongly about having three, I, I know they'd like more, there's just not room on the, on the property to do that, so...
Okay, now, I, now I understand why there was a lot of comments, I didn't realize they were commenting on the two, the original proposal for the two.
Yes.
And then the other question I have is about the, um, um, the, the sidewalk along Northwest Highway, and that seemed to be something that wasn't, um, really something you were thrilled about doing, if you put it like that, but, um, it does seem that we've worked that out and you're all in agreement, and, and I, I know, again, because this is one of our kind of regular walking areas, um, we, at least, I know two people who will make good use of that sidewalk, so thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, so let me just preface by saying that, um, this looks, you know, really nice, I, I think the community, uh, enjoys Rec Park, and I know this has been in the work for probably decades, you know, so to speak, and the current board and, and the current management team are just, uh, um, carrying out what was the desires of previous boards, um, and so what I'm gonna ask is not a, anything to kind of, um, look down at what's going on here, it's just a statement from, uh, somebody who's focused on, on business and, and residential property taxes, um, so, and Carrie, I know you're an award-winning manager of, and executive director, so I, I appreciate all you do. So I just, I need to return back to, or I would like to return back to the tax issue, and, um, and I know it was brought up by Commissioner Ennis, who is a property tax consultant, by the way, um, and we talked about sales tax loss at three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In addition, there will be property tax loss, correct?
So...
Because you, you will not be, there was property tax being paid on those parcels.
So they, the businesses did pay sales tax, so there was, should have been no sales tax loss.
Correct, well, I'm saying, once, once you take it over, you're not gonna have sales tax.
That's correct, those businesses are moved out now, we're ready to demolish the buildings, correct.
Correct, okay, so what I'm saying is, so I guess my, let's go to the helicopter view, the, view first here, and that is that we are taking properties off of Northwest Highway, which is a business thoroughfare, or a thoroughfare that many businesses use. Now, albeit those, some of those, um, auto repair shops were in, not, not in the best of shape, and, and in some ways, sight, you know, and, uh, not a good sight to see, but that is, uh, along Northwest Highway there, that would be prime business, um, to, to, you know, for a business to locate, for a business to pay property tax, for a business to get sales tax, um, so I, I guess my question is, is I'm not trying to derail anything that we have going on, but I just want a sense of awareness of, of what is happening here, and that we be careful in future planning, whether it's your board, your staff, our board, our staff, and taking properties that could generate business tax, property tax, 'cause we're gonna lose, call it, three hundred and eighty- call it, three hundred and eighty thousand of sales tax. We're probably going to lose maybe a million, a couple million dollars of property tax by not putting that back into the, you know, to a business. And we're using taxpayer dollars along Northwest Highway to purchase, you know, the space, or we have done that. So I would just caution us in the future and our planning area about doing that, because now those, that couple million dollars that is now, each park, each district, whether it's Park District Library, Village, we have our bills to pay. So alls we're doing is spreading that cost amongst lesser tax-paying entities, whether it be business or whether it be resident. So that's what I, I just, if you could take that back to your board, and I'm certainly just suggesting that for our planning staff too, that we watch that. Now, do you have any other plans for any other properties on major thoroughfares that were your purchasing property that may go to the parks?
Like plans of properties we haven't already purchased?
That you may have purchased recently or that you will be purchasing?
We did purchase seven fifty Northwest Highway, which is right in front of the Ark.
Okay, so that's the old law office, Ernie Blumquik's law office, okay.
Other than that, nothing, I've been here since 2020, there's been no other purchases exactly.
Okay, okay, so we'll be, so you guys will be using that property also to take, and that's right at the corner of Euclid and Northwest Highway?
Correct.
Okay, to be used as incorporated into that park? Okay, okay. Again, I'm just, it's, Carrie, you're a great administrator, and like I say, I can, you know, you're, I know you through Rotary and that type of thing, so this is not anything. Personally, it's just a cautionary statement to the community, to our planners going forward, that we be careful about taking properties off the business thoroughfares and not getting tax revenue, whether it be for property tax, sales tax, and then using tax dollars, not only that, to do that, when we can find other avenues. But we have lovely parks, I love our parks, no question. So it's just a visionary future statement, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just in response, I understand the concern that Trustee Bertucci has raised, but it's really limited circumstances for the Park District in doing something like this. You've mentioned the two properties, and I can't think of any others that are contiguous to existing parks that have been there for many, many years, and so it just makes sense. Obviously, the, you know, the community wants green space as well, wants parks. So this is kind of balancing the competing interests, and I really think it makes sense for you to complete your vision on both of these pieces of property and fulfill your board's vision as well, so just my comments on it. Trustee Tanali.
Thanks, Mayor. And I agree, Trustee Bertucci speaks well about these things, and thank goodness we have someone like him up here to always watch out for the dollars, and it is important. Like Mayor Hayes, I know you guys have been working on this for a very, very long time, and it's going to be wonderful. This will be a gem for people driving through on the train on Northwest Highway, they'll see this as opposed to the garages that have been there for, you know, since I was a little boy. So it, I really am welcoming what you're doing, while being mindful that these are important issues we have to pay for. Question for you, and this is coming out of left field just a little bit. The word pickleball did not come out of anybody's lips here, and I'm curious, was it discussed? Was it a frightening word? Was it a good word? Why tennis courts only and no pickleball in this? I think I know why, but I want to hear from you.
Yeah, yes, pickleball was discussed, and we determined that the proximity to the homes, it would just not be a good fit, the noise. We're having some challenges with the noise with pickleball up at Greenslopes, now we're putting some sound screens around that. So I just don't think it'd be a good, we didn't think it'd be a good fit to the residential component.
Great answer.
Although several people did express interest in that. We do have, we did put in sixteen new dedicated pickleball courts, which is more than most communities have, so there's lots of opportunity to play, but yes, some people wanted it there for sure.
I imagine they did, and I think your answer is perfect. I'm glad you went the direction you did, because this is a quiet area, and that can be kind of noisy, so.
Yeah, it is, it's noisy.
So great.
Irritatingly noisy, I think.
I, like Trustee Labads, I wanted to comment, and I know you're not prepared to go through all this on the next phase, but the architect in me is very, very thankful that you plan on keeping the historic building there. I know there was time when that was not part of the plan. Part of the plan was that that was going to disappear. It was before your time with the park and so on.
I don't know about that, yeah.
So I'm going to attribute your genius to making sure it's staying here.
I'll take it, even though it's not me.
No, I think you should take it, and, because it's a wonderful old building, and I'm glad that it's staying, and you're doing all these other things around it to work with it, and eventually a new pool and so on too. So this part here, pretty straightforward, pretty simple, pretty nice, and really happy you're going to get started. Thanks.
Thanks.
Trustee Grassi.
Thank you. I just wanted to share a comment in response to Trustee Bertucci as well. I want to speak to the benefit, the public health, the wellness benefit that our parks, that our open spaces bring, that is the reason we have businesses want to come here, that is the reason we want people, people want to move here, and it is a very important part, as important as businesses. So I am in full support of what you have proposed here. While I understand it's always good to look at the bigger picture of what tax revenue comes in, I believe that the cost benefit of what you provide with our parks for our community far outweighs what we were getting from those little businesses on Northwest Highway. So I am in full support, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Downington.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all of your hard work on this project. I agree. I think that prime park space on Northwest Highway is invaluable to our community, and I think that the Park District is one of the reasons that people move to Arlington Heights. So I think that it's a great project. Two questions that I have. One is, we have the tree preservation plan, and I know that there's been a lot of comments from residents that are concerned about trees that are being taken down. Can you just speak to that a little bit, about what you're saving and what you'll be planting?
I believe we're taking eighteen trees down. There are six of them that are in poor condition, so there are twelve that are being taken down. We are, I think we're required to put fifty-one back in, and we're putting seventy-one trees back in. So that's, we had to move certain trees to be able to accommodate certain amenities.
Okay, great. And then the sidewalk improvements that are being done on Northwest Highway, while those are being completed, will there be any access for pedestrians and bike riders on Northwest Highway? Or will it just be closed for pedestrian access during that time?
Currently, where the fence alignment is now, they have the construction fence on the sidewalk side still allowing people to use that. Existing sidewalk, now that is in the I dot right of way. So the new eight-foot sidewalk will be set back and into the village right of way, as well as inside the Park District property. So at some point, when those two are co-constructed, one will need to get removed, and the new one will come in, so there may be times where that would not be accessible.
Okay, but there will be a period of time where kind of both, you're going to be doing construction, but that current existing carriage sidewalk will be available for.
Correct.
Yes, okay, great.
And there are some complexities, because we have to take out the various curb cuts as well too, that are from those existing businesses. In I dots right of way, that's one of the permits that we're still out for is I dot review of that portion, so there'll be some coordination with that. And we'll try in every attempt to keep some sort of access, one way or the other, during the process, one appropriate.
Okay. Would there be any kind of signage to direct people, because they couldn't go across the street?
We'll have to review that with village staff.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Trustee Baldino?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation and for coming before us this morning. My question, how long has the Rec Park plan been in the works? This has been decades in the works, correct? Right?
I don't know the exact number.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long time.
I mean, you know, well, the Park District went to referendum in 2012 and 2013, so this was part of that referendum back then, and it had been discussed before that, so.
Okay.
I mean, I think whatever the administration is that bought, for example, the businesses on Northwest Highway, they had a vision for, I mean, the Park District owned those properties for a long time.
Exactly, exactly. You're right, and so, look, I don't want to beat around the bush, the point about preserving business spaces is well-taken, but this project, it didn't just pop up. This has been in the works for a long time, and I was just looking through the village's master plan, and seventy percent of the respondents to the survey said, "We need more green space." And so I am fully supportive of all this, just like, you know, when you came before us the last time, I was very supportive. This is a great plan. It's great that it's going to happen in phases, so it's not going to be all ripped up all at once. Just wanted to take a moment to voice my, my full support for this project moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Anything from the audience on this? Seeing none. We do have a suggested motion. Charles, you want to put that motion back up?
Is it not showing up?
The recommendation, or it thought there was a suggested motion?
So this is the first part, it's, because there's a lot here, so there's several slides, so.
All right, so it's two pages.
Yeah, and then this is the second page.
Okay, got it. All right, so we have a motion. Trustee Grassi.
Happy to give it a try. I move to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare our final documents, approving the requested relief for consideration at a future board meeting. Wait, am I doing the right one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. For Plan Commission Number twenty-four dash zero zero seven, an amendment to the comprehensive plan to reclassify certain properties within the subject property as parks, rezoning of certain properties within the subject property to P L public land, planned unit development for a three-phase redevelopment of Arlington Heights Park District's Recreation Park, and special use permit for facilities owned and operated by the Village of Arlington Heights, Arlington Heights Memorial Library and branches thereof, and the Arlington Heights Park District on the subject property along the following variations of Chapter twenty-eight of the municipal code that are printed here. All of this subject to including the following conditions as recommended by Plan Commission, the Staff Development Committee as posted here.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Grassi, seconded by Trustee Labads. Any further questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, congratulations, good luck to you, and again, thank you for all the great work that the Park District does to contribute to the quality of life here in Arlington Heights, so keep up the great work.
Thank you very much to the village board for your support, and I just want to say you have an amazing staff, they've been super great to work with, so we're very grateful for that as well, so thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, there is no other new business, and so we'll move on to the report of the village manager, Mr. Eklund.
One item, Mayor. Tonight's meeting will be the final meeting under the current, final village board meeting, I should say, under the current Novus Agenda Management System. The August nineteenth village board meeting will operate entirely within Select, which is our new agenda management system. This week, the board's going to receive an email with instructions on how to set up your Select account, and you'll also be getting a link to a short training video on how to use the board portal. There's going to be a learning curve, and so please contact staff if you're experiencing any issues. The public portal for the village website will launch on August fifteenth in preparation for the August nineteenth meeting. Staff is also going to have some information for the public about the new portal through social media and other communication channels. Just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the board under Patrician Communications? Trustee Schringbeck.
Randy, when you send that email out to us, if we're having issues, are you going to put a contact name and phone number on there?
Yep, for sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Trustee Grassi.
Thank you. I just wanted to call out something from the consent agenda, rather than pull it off the agenda, I just wanted to thank the staff on the item that was regarding the new carpeting in Village Hall, and just wanted to really call out the attention to the materials that were intentionally selected to address sustainability. This is one of our strategic priorities. And what was it, the green label plus, they met the, what was it called? If you could just speak to that, I just wanted the community to know this.
Assistant Manager McCula.
Diana, don't tell the whole story about this, because we'll be here all night, how these carpets were finally selected.
Over many, 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 many months, but hold on, let me pull up the item here real quick. Let me pull it up on the, here we go.
I should have said that I was going to do that. I just was so happy that all this was put into it.
So let me see here what it is. So it is, we did have, when we did meet with the vendor, we did indicate that this was a priority for us, and we did want to ask them to steer us to carpet samples that did have an opportunity for us to meet, something that's called the green label plus. And so these are meaning that the carpet and adhesive products have received the highest indoor air quality standards rating in the carpet industries. So they are recyclable, they do have material health, products circulatory, clean air, and climate protection, water and soil stewardship, and social fairness. So this does meet some of the sustainability goals that we do have put in place, and this was something that we really looked towards when we were looking for selecting new carpet material.
I just have to laugh, because I did witness the selection process in terms of the colors and textures and things, and it was a very, very involved process, but a very select, high-quality group of staff members led by Diana, who made the very good selection, so congratulations.
It was a great team effort, working with Public Works over many, many months to make the selection. I mean, it's a big choice, we've had this carpet here for a great, what, fifteen years or so? Sixteen years. So, and we wanted to be able to meet that, the years of service too, for the carpet that we're going to be selecting again.
All right. Trustee Labads.
So may I ask a question then? Not to draw it out too much, but by the air quality, you mean it's not going to have the off-gassing that so many new products have?
Right.
So, okay, good, that's kind of what I'd hoped too. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything further from the board under Patrician Communications? All right, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
By Trustee Baldino, seconded by Trustee Schringbeck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for joining us this evening.